Okay, I'd like to open the Bedford Township Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting. It is June 11, 2025 at 7:00 PM. If we could stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Andrews, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Montreux?
Here.
Mr. Dersch?
Present.
Mr. Lake?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Andrews is here, Mr. Helm?
Here.
And Mr. Tremblay is excused.
Okay, thank you. Item four, approval of the agenda.
We can motion we approve the agenda?
Second.
Support from Mr. Helm, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Moving on to item five, approval of the minutes from May 28, 2025.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, we approve the minutes of the May 28, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Helm supports, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay, moving on to item six, public comment, limit three minutes.
Gale Kane Temperance, I guess the rest of them are just for discussion and not for vote, except for the farmers market topic, so I'll direct my conversation to that. I'm not opposed to farmers market if that's what they really are. The Temperance Action Committee had put one in downtown Temperance under the educational background of Michigan State, and there seems to be the issue that too many farmers markets are not a true farmers market. They're not there for entertainment, they're not there for, you know, crafts or anything like that. I would be concerned where this one is placed. I don't know who the owners are. You have a grow shop that has the innovations to do indoor growing features. You're next door to Shellino's, which would give opportunity for somebody to go next door and buy something, and walk it across, and put it on a table, and mark it up. That's what cannot be happening. We can't, this isn't what a farmers market is. A farmers market is where somebody has taken the time to put in the seed, to fertilize or grow organically, and produce a product that is then sold as homegrown. So I would have an awful lot of questions on this, and since there's nothing online on the packets or any other information that we can get to, that's all I'm here is to voice a concern. You know, we can have 90 in this township, but that's not the point. The point is, is what we are giving out to the public that comes and uses those. And it may be something that you guys want to look into in putting into an ordinance as to what is a farmers market, to make sure, because if this is going to start, and everybody's going to want one, we're going to have to have some sort of guideline, so don't open up Pandora's box until you're ready. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, new business. Item A, recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals on the plot plan layout for Zogio Properties LLC for temporary use of a farmers market located on parcel number 5802-035-058-11, otherwise known as 6800 Lewis Avenue, Temperance, Michigan 48182. Ms. Rector.
Yes, again, the applicants are Zogio Properties LLC, cultivation innovation, 6800 Lewis Avenue. Representatives are David Azzoni and Steve, I'll never be able to pronounce the last name, Gardiayius?
Georgias.
Georgias. C1 Local Commercial, currently, current use is retail sales and a dance studio. They're looking for a temporary farmers market use. This request is from Zogio Properties LLC for a temporary farmers market to include two licensed food trucks to be located at 6800 Lewis Avenue in Temperance, Michigan. The current uses on the property are a retail sale location, cultivation innovations, and a dance studio, Stage Stars Academy of Dance. The applicant has provided a plot plan layout. The plot plan identifies the booth setup area and none to be located on the grassy area, eight yellow, food trucks are two in blue, and the proposed parking area, all included, labeled in black. As noted on the application, there is no proposed signage at this time. The applicant has provided a letter from the dance studio advising that the use will not impede on the business and the planning department obtained the hours of operation on the website. The applicant informed the planning department restroom facilities are located within the building and will be available to patrons. The applicant has indicated the hours of operation are from 1:00 PM till 4:00 PM for specific days as follows, located on the last Sunday of each month, 7/27, 8/31, 9/28, and 10/26. The applicant noted a day of 6/29. However, due to the timeframe for the request, the planning department advised to not provide the farmers market until the use had a determination had been made, which it will be presented to the BZA on July 7. The applicant is requesting a consideration for a temporary two-year approval to ensure stability and planning for both the vendors and the community participants. The planning commission will not be making a decision on this request, as the request for a temporary use permit is required to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. A public hearing will be held at the BZA meeting, and the property owners within 300 feet of the perimeter of the property will be notified of a public hearing and the proposed temporary use. The Bedford Township Zoning Ordinance, Section 42204, does however state that the Board of Zoning Appeals shall seek the review and recommendation from the planning commission prior to taking any action. Therefore, action on this request will be in the form of a recommendation to the BZA, and this item has been scheduled for consideration at the July 7 BZA meeting. I will refer to the layout plot plan as provided by the applicant, showing this area is provided for parking. This is where the booth will be set up for the farmers market, and the area in blue is where they're proposing two licensed food trucks, and the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you. The applicants like to step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then let us know if there's anything you want to add to what Ms. Rector described.
Steve Georgias, 9621 Plank Road, Clayton, Michigan.
David Azzoni, 7932 Colony Oaks Drive, Toledo, Ohio, 43617.
Thank you. Anything you want to add to what Ms. Rector read?
Yeah, so at the end of the day, we just want to really be more involved with the community. We have a lot of local mothers, a lot of local crafts, fresh farm eggs. We're just trying to get, you know, more involvement with everybody in the community, and support local crafts and everything else in between.
Okay.
So yeah, we were approached by a number of our customers and local vendors that just were interested in using the backlot, so we had no idea, you know, we had to go through all this stuff, so that's why we potentially drew this for you and wanted to go about it the right way, but we certainly are interested in helping the community be able to provide their crafts and services to people, you know.
So everyone can understand, can you tell us what you sell at your store?
I always sell gardening equipment, potting soil, plants, seeds, grow lights, and everything in between that to grow plants, start the seed, and harvest. Yep.
Anybody have any questions for the applicants?
And just wanted a quick note, the layout's pretty self-explanatory, but upon entering the actual driveway, we do plan on putting cones across from the parking, just to alleviate, yeah, exactly where the arrow is, just to alleviate any kind of car traffic going to the back. Ample parking in the front, we have about 40 to 45 parking spots in the front, and yeah, again, nothing would be on the grass.
For the record, we're here just to discuss the site plan, not the use, that would be up to the BZA.
The use is what is being proposed, and you are reviewing the plot plan as a recommendation to allow the farmers market with this plot plan on this location.
Anybody have any questions?
What do you mean? No comments, questions?
How much does it cost to be a vendor?
It's free.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now it's just free for everybody, and then obviously, we got to fork the bill for the food trucks, so we don't make that much money on a Sunday, so we're kind of losing a little bit of money, but we're just trying to help people, yet again, sell their crafts and get our name out there.
And the last thing we're trying to do is step on the actual Bedford Township's, or Bedford Farmers Market. This is just trying to do it on an opposite day, just to get, you know, all their locals involved, and really try to promote our business.
Mr. Dersch? Mr. Lake?
Yeah, so I, you know, when I looked at the ordinance as it stated today, there's really six pieces of requirement that are needed, right? So I looked through what was proposed, and I do have a couple of questions. I think you meet the requirements on at least three of the six, and there's a couple of questions I have, just to clarify a couple others. One of the things that, you know, the permit in writing, there needs to be arrangements for, like, a teardown plan. I didn't see that in there. Of course, there's not much to it, so I don't know if that's something we need to amend if we do approve, that there needs to be something along the lines of a teardown plan. The other question, I guess, you're stating there's 45 parking spots. I see 28, and I do have some concern, right? And I think maybe this question's more for the planning, right? So I see two food trucks. I know when you have, like, a restaurant-type item, when it goes into a location like this, parking requirements start to get larger, and I don't know if we need to have parking requirements for, you know, maybe part of it as retail, part of it as food, to consider here, because if that's the case, I'm worried about the parking, right? And only because also, number five, is we have to give notice to adjacent owners. And in the packet, I did see that Stars was aligned, that's great, but I also noticed if parking were to overflow, you've got the adjacent property that's currently, I think it's Cardinal and Premier Vision, and then also you've got Shellino's next door as well. Shellino's will be open at that same time that the farmers market would be open, so I'm concerned about, you know, would we be able to contain all the parking for the farmers market here on this property, or would it go to the other? So I guess my question's, one of the planning would be, do we need to think about something to consider with regards to the parking, and looking at this as maybe retail and food? And then my question to the applicants would be, is there a teardown plan? Have you thought through that? And then have you talked to Shellino's and the other, I don't know who the property owners, but it's where Cardinal and Premier is.
Yeah, I definitely haven't spoke to Shellino's, nor do I, yeah, don't care to use their lot or any overflow or anything like that, and certainly don't care to use anyone else's lot either. We just want to use our own property for this venue, so.
Yeah, we think, you know, I put on two food trucks, two licensed food trucks on the plan. Most likely, it's going to start out pretty slow and very small. We just wanted to have the opportunity to have that second if it did grow organically, so we definitely can talk to any local owners and just discuss the plan, but at this point, I don't see it being anything more than 30 parking spots being used.
Sure, and that's my, my concern is just that, you know, if it does get bigger, how do you contain? How do you make sure that it's not spilling over into your neighbors?
Sure, understood. Really hopefully, this would promote Shellino's and bring business to them as well.
Hopefully.
And I will answer the question. There is no defined actual parking requirements, because at this time, that's why they're asking for the food trucks, because we don't actually define whether they're permitted or not within the township. The 28 parking spaces, that's why I advise them that they cannot have any of their area parking for that, has to be provided safely for the patrons to be able, and that's why they determined to put the cones there. Please keep in mind, this is a recommendation, and you can include any conditions with that that you would like the Board of Zoning Appeals to have information on prior before making a decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Dersch?
I guess I want to touch on that food truck comment, now that Jody brought it up. So what kind of gray area is that, or what does that mean in terms of they're not permitted, or there isn't an ordinance that allows them, or exactly, is that something that needs to be considered?
We are working on a food truck ordinance right now. We have not clearly defined in the ordinance language, so that's why they're able, and they're providing it with this application. So if they do have two food trucks, they are permitted to do so by the temporary use, should the BZA grant the variance of that use.
And then, understanding the request for another 12-month extension for planning, you know, is that something we did on the previous farmers market? Anyone that was here that remembers that, or did the first year was a trial, and then we decided to grant 12 months after the first year?
I believe that's a determination from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Normally, the processes, they come to this board, they make, you make a recommendation, it goes to the BZA, comes back the following year to the planning commission, make sure there's no changes, no concerns, no violations, they stayed in compliance, they're not increasing, and then it goes back to the BZA, and at that time, it allows for the 12-month extension. However, they are asking the BZA to take into consideration, to provide that for the participants that are participating this year, to provide them that it will be able to take place again next year, but that's going to be a determination. You can actually include that in your recommendation if you desire, or leave it up to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, yeah, I guess personally, maybe I'm a little hesitant on that without seeing how this plays out the first time. Granted, you could always come back in October, November, and be amply prepared for next year.
Sure.
I think we'd probably like to see how this goes before jumping in feet first.
Certainly, absolutely.
That was all I had, Chair.
Anybody else? Mr. Andrews?
Question, because there's a couple of questions regarding parking. Do you intend to keep your retail location open on Sundays, the Sundays that the farmers market will present?
So, I mean, yes and no. We'll just be selling plants as vendors there, but the actual retail is not open. We're just selling plants like a sidewalk sale.
Then any knowledge of whether the Stars Dance Academy is open on Sundays?
No, they're not open Sunday.
So from a parking perspective, you're not looking at an already crowded lot, most likely?
It should be an empty lot.
Empty lot, yeah. Yes, sir.
Ms. Rector?
And just for the record, we did include from the website off of Google that it does show they are closed on Sunday, the dance studio as well.
Your facility will be open for restrooms?
Yeah, for the people in the back, they can walk through the back of the warehouses, they trickle through the vendors to use the restroom. We have a restroom in the back of the warehouse and in the front retail space as well, so there's two restrooms available.
Mr. Dersch?
I guess presumably, those are ADA accessible and meet all those requirements for use?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Only thing I'll add is just, I appreciate that you're a local business, and anything we can do to help grow a local business, and as I understand it, you service Toledo, Bedford out of this location.
Yep, we have a Monroe location that we just recently closed. We've been in business for 14 years now in Temperance, and then our Toledo location, I think, has been 10, 10 or 11 years now. So, long story short, is yeah, we've been in the Bedford area for quite some time, so, and we don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon.
I'm not his spokesman, but I talked to the owner of Shellino's, and I don't think he'll have a problem with this. He didn't really understand what you sold. A lot of people, I didn't know. I stopped in today, and I met you, and saw what you, you know, had for sale.
Certainly, yeah, we have plant fertilizer for every plant on earth, and all of them require something different, and then we just have pretty much thousands of bottles of fertilizer to cater to that, so.
And you want to promote the businesses of your customers, or just?
Absolutely.
Candles?
Candles, I mean, fresh eggs, I mean, whatever vendors in the area sell, I guess, you know, yeah. Jewelry.
Jewelry. All right, anybody else have any other questions?
Mr. Camprath, is there, do we already have, like, certain standards with the other farmers market, like, certain insurance that they need to carry, or anything along those lines?
We would have to look at the approval conditions established by the BZA for those approvals. I'm not familiar with what all is entailed in that approval.
From my recollection, we do not require anything provided to the township, because it is on private property owned by the Lambertville United Methodist Church, and they give them permission to use the property, so I believe that would be between them and the farmers market.
In this situation as well, is that what you're saying?
I would say yes.
Anything else? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We recommended the Board of Zoning Appeals that we approve the presented plot plan layout for Zogio Properties LLC for temporary use as a farmers market located at parcel number 5802-035-5811, otherwise known as 6800 Lewis Avenue, Temperance, Michigan, 48182.
Is there support?
Excellent.
Yes, by all means.
Fred Mike, I'm on the line with you. I just think Mr. Dersch said about a one-year approval instead of a two-year, I think that's appropriate. T paradome plan, a condition upon a tear down plan, and coordination with neighbors shouldn't be coming to a problem.
Accept his friendly amendment?
I do, yeah. I guess with the, we're recommending that to the BZA to include as conditions in there. Yeah, I accept that.
Any other amendments? Any support for the motion?
I'll support.
Mr. Dersch supports. Mr. Andrews, can you call the roll?
Mr. Andrews says aye. Mr. Dersch?
Aye.
Mr. Montreux?
Aye.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, Ms. Rector, anything?
Yes, just a reminder, it will be on for the Board of Zoning Appeals under the July 7 meeting. Will be a public hearing at that point. Everyone within 300 feet of the perimeter of the property is notified for that meeting, and we'll see you gentlemen back on the 7th.
Beautiful. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, guys. Appreciate it.
Hey, moving on to item eight, old business. Item A, discussion on the Bedford Township CIP Capital Improvement Plan. Ms. Rector?
I'm actually going to have Mr. Miller, Finance Manager, come up, and if anybody has any questions. Keep in mind, 2026 has already been presented to the Township Board, so this is on for discussion and information only. No recommendation for the following year CIP at this point.
Hello, Mr. Miller.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Are you?
Doing great.
Anybody have any questions about the CIP or comments?
Maybe I can start by saying?
Mr. Dersch?
Every time. I guess, I'll just start real high level, and maybe I'm jumping ahead here, but can we get an explanation of how this process is supposed to play out? Because I don't know that we were prepared for the decisions that we made a couple months ago for the budget. Put it bluntly.
Yes. I don't have the official, in your policy gives all the details, but high level, like you said, what's supposed to happen, if somebody wants a project, they want to purchase something, they're supposed to bring that to you with all the specs of the project, what it is, a description of what it is, detail, when they expect to replace that asset, or if it's a new asset, the year they expect to install it or replace it, how much it's going to cost to replace, and any other details that you might need. At that point, you compare that to all the projects that have been submitted, you rank them, and determine which projects can be done, and which ones are on hold.
Can you remind me, if the board may want to know, what was the cutoff to make the list?
Well, there's really no cutoff, but to make the budget, I need to have it by the end of January.
I meant in terms of what assets are we going to keep an eye on, 50,000 and above?
I'm not sure what the policy, but I wouldn't get hung up on a dollar amount.
I just want to be reminded, what are we tracking? Cars?
No, you're tracking infrastructure, buildings.
Okay.
And everything else, like cars, operational stuff, that's handled in Fund 447.
Okay.
This fund is 446, the Township Improvement Revolving Fund, is mainly for those long-term projects, generally over six years of planning.
Okay. One of my overriding concerns is in the specifics about this, and we talked about it briefly before the meeting, that I had the impression that the Parks Board, for example, could be any department, would be discussing these things, and looking forward into 2027, 2028, 2029, 2030, there are some pretty high dollar amounts that are going to have to be allocated from the general fund into the TIRF, and I just want to make sure that it stays on their agenda, and is discussed at least midway through the year and just before budget time, that things are reviewed. Is that reasonable to ask in a sense?
I would say it's required. The less information you have, the less chance it has of going through.
And I'm just going to piggyback on that. Keep in mind, though, it's not Mr. Miller's responsibility, or the planning department's responsibility, to make sure the Park Commission puts it on their agenda and follows up on it. It's each individual department's responsibility. They bring the information to us.
That's the process that we're supposed to oversee, and that's what I'm asking about. I just want to make sure that it's happening. Mr. Andrews?
So as elected, at least as elected members, the Park Board, for example, we, as a commission, can ask them to come to our meetings, require them to come to our meetings, correct, to discuss some of this stuff?
In this instance, with the CIP, I believe, yes, you can request any head of the department to come before the commission, because you are the ones making the recommendation to the Township Board.
I think that goes with my initial question of, every group should probably come in here and give us an explanation of what value these things have, and why they're important, and what we see in the future with them, because personally, I have an issue with a couple of things on here that I don't know that should be on here, but without that information, it's really hard to make that decision.
It seems as though, as a commission, we can kind of determine what that frequency needs to be for representation by these different departments, and I guess when the cutoff would need to be, that we need to hear their case, to give enough time for the next fiscal year to be established.
Would be a good time for them to do that? Each department, by what date?
I just need your final product by the end of January. Then you can set your terms and conditions.
So what are we talking, Jody, November, December?
Totally up to the commission what you decide and what department you want to come before you.
Seems like if we require, like, end of the calendar year, we might have one meeting before the budgets do.
Some recommendations, so, like, doing planning, so this is fun for me, honestly. But, yeah, so when it comes to something as important as what we're looking at here, and I agree with Mr. Dersch, you know, some of these things I might take exception to, and I don't want to just blindly approve things, or just kind of be a rubber stamp, right? There should be a little level of scrutiny. My thoughts, and this is open for discussion with the group, if we can make a recommendation to the township of, okay, if we're going to approve these, I agree, we need some level of due diligence or understanding of what exactly is behind these. So my recommendation would be that there's, quarterly, we ask, if you've got a plan already that you want to do, bring it before us so we can hear what that is, and if we're aligned, or we think there's value to it, or if we can understand if there are options to do something different. The other thing is, I agree, I remember last time we reviewed this, Mr. Mahoney, was, there was a lot more on the list, so I wonder what happened to those other things, they just got wiped away, or we just determined they weren't important to be on here, they weren't in the general fund, whatever the case may be. There could be some other things that we might want to consider as well, because I agree with Mr. Dersch again, there's some things on here that I really question if it's rational.
Yeah, from a timeframe standpoint, I would say, like, September, October, we need to be meeting with these groups and talking about this, because you get into the holidays and end of the year rush, and asking to do something in January to meet the deadline's probably not practical. I would say, and the end of summer, we'd be the time that we really need to start looking at this and meeting with these groups, and even if it's a special meeting that we need to set up or establish, I think it's important that we do that, to walk through these items.
If the desire, too, is to reach out to those department heads and have someone from the commission then bring the information back, that's always an option as well. If there's some consensus of what we want, say, the parks, the parks are the largest on the agenda, I believe, I agree with the commission, someone should be in representation, and I believe tonight there is someone here. But the other things, such as the cemeteries, those are things that have been part of the township for years. They are under the Clerk's Department. I believe those are clearly defined. She clearly defines why she wants a 24 by 24 building. The maintenance building on Lewis Avenue is being in discussions. Those are desirable. There is the breakdown. Keep in mind, there is essential, desirable, and acceptable, and those are defined as the stepstones of where we're going to move them. So what would be, replace the roof in 2024 on the Cars Grove. So now it's acceptable because in 2024 we are looking, it was going to be replaced. So keep that in mind, that the breakdown of them is acceptable, desirable, and essential. Essential is the most important that the township has come to understanding.
My major concern is I don't want to see surprised people. We have to allocate a half a million dollars to the turf because we didn't talk about it. We didn't brace ourselves for impact. We didn't prepare in terms of finding funding sources for some of these assets. Just in 2027, I calculate 400,000. It could be more than that by then, after a year. And we've got new pickleball courts that are going to have to be perhaps added to this or to their maintenance, whatever. It's got to be added to the budget in total. But I'm about preparation. It's about no surprises. And we have to come out and address what we're going to do. Should we replace it? Should we raise taxes? Should we come up with a millage? Whatever. I mean, it's silly to sit there and wait for the time bomb to explode, and that's why I am trying to avoid here.
And since you brought up the pickleball courts, once they are installed, it will be the Parks Commission responsibility to bring it to the commission, request it to be added on, and find a determination, expansion of costs to maintain those. I'm just using this as an example because it's something new. Costs to maintain those, moving forward if they are, lifespan of them to be replaced, and then the timeframe to disperse that out should they need replaced again. Will pickleball courts be in 10, 15 years still desirable to be playing? I don't know.
Mr. Dersh?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Mahoney, you brought up a good question. Maybe Bob can kind of answer this, maybe not, but is, are these parks items putting, I guess, how to word this, are the park items on this list putting us into a fiscal strain? Fund? Are there other things we should be funding or doing with that money?
Well, one thing that's glaring that's not on this list is the replacement of this Township Hall, for one. There might be other things that should be on this list that are not on here yet. It'll take some detailed analysis. As for strain, we haven't committed to spend any money, so at this point, there's no strain. You choose when you want to replace that.
And what?
Yeah, I guess, you brought up a good point about a millage, and I'll throw the M-word out there, I'll be the bad guy, but, you know, a lot of this money is going to the parks. If we value the parks, is there a different way we need to look at funding them instead of putting money aside that needs to go to something else or could go to something else that is just as valuable or even more important in some cases?
I'll tell you, because, I don't, sorry, you weren't on the board last year, but we did have the Parks Commission representative come to one of our meetings and explain essentially the parks have not been funded in the general fund at all, and they are in higher repair, right? He had actually had some of these playscape folks come out and actually analyzed, looked at the playscapes and determined, yeah, you should have replaced these like three years ago. So, you know, while we continue to add parks, there's no plan to maintain parks. And I think this was the avenue to go do that, and that's where the former Parks Commission representative saw this as an opportunity, which I kind of agree with, but if we don't fund them.
Mr. Lake, may I ask, or interrupt? The parks have been sufficiently funded for many years. They just have not spent the money.
The question would be, where is it and why is it on here then? That's-
What happens is because it's in a department, it's a use it or lose it, so they have been leaving about $80,000 a year on the table that they have not been spending.
And they could have easily just said-
They could have easily-
Put it into the unallocated portion of this.
And I'll, okay, 80,000 a year? I'm looking at all these things that we have at our parks?
Right.
It still doesn't, doesn't-
Touch what needs to be done.
Well, depends how long you did it. I mean, the whole point of the CIP is to avoid millages. The whole point of the CIP is to put money away without increasing taxpayer burden and pay for things that you know for a fact eventually you're going to have to replace. But it's just never been implemented. It's been how long that there's just nothing.
I understand you. But I also add in, okay, did we need a cemetery in this township? Do we need to continue to manage Benner Oak School, right? Continue to add things, but we don't budget for them or plan to maintain them, right? There isn't 80,000, understood. I get that.
And I just want to piggyback on Mr. Miller's comment. 80,000 from the Township General Fund, not any funding that the Park Commission would have gathered separately. That was in their budget. As I get a budget for the Planning Department, if I don't use it, I lose it. I lose it the following year. Every year you get a budget, you have to either add or subtract wherever you feel from the previous year that you've increased use of funding. So that is something that the Park Commission has to take and present part of their budget to the Township Board.
And that's what I hope to hear in their meetings, that they're talking about this. And I know it's a better board I think we've had in a while. I don't know if you care to step up and say anything, Josh, or you don't have to.
I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, don't want to do-
Don't feel like you are.
Any questions, I'll feel free to answer about some of those. Sorry. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Miller? So we want to suggest that we set up a September timeline for the Parks Board and other department heads who are in the CIP to come in and present to the Planning Commission?
I have a question. So, is this board, I was seeing if the Township Hall, if the roof of this building is on here? Is it? Is the roof of this building on here?
Yeah.
So say that it's not.
Very acceptable. I pulled it up on the screen. You see the maintained allocation, Township Hall rehab, Township Hall replace. It's under the supervisor.
Is that the roof?
I think it's out.
Or is that the entire, that's the entire thing?
Uh, look at-
Township Hall roof, okay, I see.
Line number three.
So, so the point was, I was just using that as an example. Say that that's not on there. Say that the Township HVAC is not on there, and the supervisor had not recommended it to be on there. Is this board allowed to say, do you have the roof on here? Do we have the HVAC system? Is this board allowed to put those things into this if they haven't come from a department head?
I believe you can recommend it from the department head, and then the department head has to be the one because they have to allocate it within the budget.
Okay.
But the Township Board is the deciding board for the allocation amount, no matter what it is. If you change numbers and increase, the Township Board can always take it back. It is the Township Board because they're the ones that allocate the funding for the township. But yes, I believe this board can recommend anything to be put on the list.
This is your plan. You do what you want with it. If you need something on here, you add it and get the detail that you need.
Another clarifying question. So, we, we put the money in for Cars Grove Playscape, estimated replacement year 2027, put that money away, we have that money, gets to be 2027, that doesn't need replaced. That's, you can, there's, there's not a requirement to spend any of the, any of these monies either, correct?
Yes, it would still have to go recommend to the Township Board to spend the money.
The whole-
Whether it's allocated or not, if the Township Board made a determination to not spend the money, depending on where the financial status is, absolutely unless the board says yes, it would not be funded.
Would that be a Parks Board recommendation to the board?
It would be a recommendation to you from the Park Board, and then you would make the recommendation to the Township Board.
That was, that was a good question, Craig. That was one of mine, like, seeing the roof on here. Maybe we get a roof inspection in 2030 and they say it's good for five more years. So we could defer that expense, but still keep the money there and shift it around to maybe something different that came up that was more urgent, but still in the plan. But maybe we could move it to something else if we needed to.
So this is-
It's still an allocation toward where you're taking it from, because it may be another year. Money better be there.
This is a living document. So in your example, you would take the roof, you'd change the year from 2028, or whatever item, to 2035, and all the numbers would automatically calculate and update.
Is there commentary from Treasury, like, do they, would they have input on this to say on the revenue side, it's looking bleak, property values are dropping, hence the property taxes are lowering?
That'd be me.
Would be. So you can foresee a drop in tax revenue?
I do plan out several years.
How's that looking?
Right now, it's stable. But anything can happen.
Sure.
Or, if you, I looked at the Semcock stuff for 2050 for the master plan, and yeah, Bedford Township is like the only township in Monroe County expected to see growth, but it's like 2% over the, it's very minimal, and most of the surrounding areas are actually expected to decline or stay flat.
I gotta believe it's retiree traffic coming from Toledo, coming here to retire. I mean, is that where you see the growth in this township?
I don't-
Apartment buildings?
I do not see growth. You know, maybe the 1%, 2%. I see more stable.
Yeah, and that's on the property value side, though. It's, a lot of homes for sale are taking price cuts now. So it seems like that's kind of wavering a bit, too.
As an example, the last 10 years, according to the census, we only had 837 new households the last 10 years.
Yeah, and people are reluctant to move because they're going to move into a higher mortgage rate. And that's going to continue to kind of kill home sales. Brad, what do you see?
I still see a lot of activity. I still think we're in a housing shortage. Anything good selling and selling above asking.
Couple, couple comments, and maybe I'm confused. The statement is that this is our plan, as in the Planning Commission. But we put none of the items on here. Actually, this is from other departments. And the way I understood when I, when I read how the bill was proposed with the Michigan State Legislature, was that this, this is the township's plan to address long-range financial responsibilities or planned responsibilities. So I don't know that it's our plan. We need to look at it and say, yes, we agree or disagree, right? So that, that's kind of the key crux I have here. And I guess if we can get that right, I think that's the one ask. Can we ask that? Anyone that's got something on here, come and explain. Like, if I'm going to ask for, hey, in seven years, I want $900,000, I've got to have a plan. And I've got to have my leadership approve that plan. There's got to be a good reason behind why we're going to do that. Like, there's some return on investment or, or this is something, you know, that's going to benefit the community in X, Y, Z shape or form. I know we've got some justifications here, but honestly, there's no context behind it. And that's why I guess I, I don't, I take a, I guess I take a little bit of pause to think that this is our plan because how do we, we don't work for the township. We don't know what these are. We have no idea. So I guess if we can have people, if that's the one thing we can ask, then great, let's do that. And let's, and if we're going to prove this, I want to make sure I understand and have some ownership over why these are on here.
Yeah, I think you're-
I, whoops, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that, and I think the interpretation of your plan is that you're the ones that are going to, I'm going to use the word manipulate it, move the items around. We have to keep the items somewhere in acceptable, desirable, or essential because they are the infrastructure and the main buildings within the township that we are required to maintain by the state mandate, that these are the structures. So if you look down in acceptable, where we were talking about the Township Hall roof, we look like it, it should be replaced in 2030. If something were to happen, we would have to bring it back and say, that needs to be moved to essential, and we need to do that in two years. So that is where I think the interpretation of it's your job if, of your plan because you're going to be the ones making the recommendation. The items, if I'm not mistaken, they have to, we have to maintain the items because it's what's owned by the township and it's our responsibility. So I think it's your plan now moving forward, moving the items, adding, changing. Yes, the department has, have to bring it to you to add it to the, but you can add to the infrastructure as well. If something is owned by the township and we've missed it, absolutely it should be added. Pickleboards, pickleball courts should be added. They're going to be an infrastructure and a long-term plan to keep maintained for the parks. So I think that that's where I think the interpretation of it being the Planning Commission's plan, it's not going to go anywhere until you make a recommendation to the Township Board and get the information. Your job as the Planning Commission with the CIP is to do the work to be able to provide the information to the Township Board. Correct me or if you have anything to add.
That is, that is correct.
Well, that, that actually brings up kind of where I was going with my next point is, nothing says we have to keep certain assets, though. It could be a pavilion that we say, we don't need that anymore. Do we really need this on here in 20 years to replace? And I guess in Jake's case, you know, it's almost for a business case, right, of, you know, okay, we've got this pavilion, we rent it out for X number of dollars a year. Is this pavilion even profitable? Or does it make sense to maintain and have? Is it utilized? What is the reasoning behind even keeping these on this list before we consider replacing them?
Well, if the Township Board says we're going to get rid of it, we have to be able to still maintain it. So if you recommend, say, in discussions, desirable in discussion with the Monroe County Drain Commission on the Lewis Avenue maintenance building, if you say we don't want it, doesn't mean Township Board's going to say, yeah, we're going to take it off and we're going to get rid of it. If we own it, we still have to maintain it. It's part of our capital, it's part of the capital improvement of the township. It would, no different than the maintenance building in the back will be now added because it's going to eventually need repairs, maintenance, parking lots will be maintained. So I think that if we own it, we still have to maintain it until we make a decision with it.
I've got a concern, like, a year from now, if, like you said, revenue stays stable, we have four, at least $400,000 of allocation. Do we have that right now, or?
Yes.
Will we be able to meet that in 2027 budget year?
Yes, you should be able to. As of right now, I do not see any major changes.
Okay.
But anything could happen.
Sure.
But right now, in the plan, that's the plan.
I like to think there's a positive in that we're talking about it and, you know, looking at it, so.
I'd like to follow up on one more item. You have a master plan that's coming up.
Mm-hmm.
This would be a great opportunity to make sure the items on here are in the master plan or the master plan, you know, tie the two together.
Okay. We would do that, what, as an addendum, or how would that work? How would it-
If you read the master plan, it clearly refers to the CIP in the master plan. You just want to make sure all the capital improvement items are accounted for in the master plan.
So we'll put it actually inside of it, not as, like I said, an addendum to the master plan?
Be a determination by the Planning Commission when the master plan comes before you or through the next workshop.
Okay, something to think about.
And one more follow-up to Mr. Lake's comment. You are correct. If you cannot get the information that's required, you can always go to the supervisor's office and request that information. If you still can't get it, you can always go to me, come to me and see if I can get it. If you just can't get the information you need, it may not be CIP worthy. Hopefully that answered your question.
I want to go back to my other point. Maybe it should be an addendum because the master plan's reviewed every five years, and this theory would be updated every year, right?
Touche. I agree with you 100%.
All right. Anybody have anything else?
One more comment, then I'm really going to stop talking. So I think there's three things that really need to happen here. So I think the first thing is review, right? So you'd mentioned, let's have some type of review in September prior to budget close. We take those recommendations or whatever. I don't know how we as a group can talk about potential adjustments based on what we hear or learn, and then potentially come back and have some type of alignment as to, this is what we see, and provide that back to each of these entities on the CIP plan. And I agree with you on the CIP addendum to the master plan. It should be an addendum, not a set in stone, because master plan isn't updated that often. I don't know if the rest of you feel the same way, but it's, it's very hard for me to be aligned with the plan if I don't understand the justification behind the items.
No, I agree. There's definitely some information lacking on some of these, and even getting down to like the parking lots, you know, what are we doing with the parking lot? It's, it's on here, but are we paving it? Are we re-stoning it? You know, are we doing drainage improvements? Definitely, I feel like we need a little more insight to some of these items to make a good recommendation.
I would hope the Parks Board or whatever department it is would have each category acceptable, desirable, and have their own inventory sheet for every asset, and it explains all that. It's just, in terms of putting it in a spreadsheet, that's probably what you're looking at. I assume that they- I assume that they have something like that, hopefully.
That it should be required, yeah.
I guess open for your comments or thoughts, but is that a one-time workshop where these departments come, they speak to us, they talk about each line item? Can we accomplish that in one sitting? Do we need to have separate meetings leading up to that September or October deadline where we cover essential, you know, items, these essential in one meeting and then desirable in another?
Personally, I think they should be discussing it in their meetings, each department, and then they come in September. That gives us enough time to have them go back if they're, we demand a change or expect or some alteration. What do you guys think?
No, I'm aligned, yeah.
I guess, yeah, there's, there's what we expect, and then there's reality. It sounds like some of these departments are not actually talking about this stuff until like, whatever.
Till January.
Final submittal, right? So if we actually have a meeting on the calendar, which maybe we could even schedule that starting tonight, where we know that the supervisor's office needs to be present for the planning commission on whatever the date may be, maybe it gives a little bit of extra fire to discuss that leading up to said meeting. Because realistically, the Park Commission is the only department on here that like has meetings.
They're big ones.
The rest, the clerk and the supervisor department are just departments. So the, the Park Commission does have the opportunity to discuss these items, and we certainly would encourage you to. But the other, you know, the other department heads, it's really just a representation from the township departments. There's no meetings, there's no, as far as we know, like, public forum for which these are going to be discussed. It's going to be the Planning Commission meeting, or not at all.
Would we require a vote to set a date, or would you just make it a requirement that they show up in September?
Moving forward, if the desire of the commission is, I would encourage the chair to send an email to the supervisor, the treasurer. I don't know if the treasurer actually has anything. I think it's the, just the supervisor and the clerk's department.
We should include the treasurer.
Name of spoke.
And then advise that you would like to know what meeting on a Wednesday night that they could attend, because it would have to come as a request from you. I would not want to make a motion and require them to come to a meeting if they are unable to attend and have it scheduled, because once we set the date, it would be the meeting they would have to come to. I would respectfully ask to reach out to them and ask them, say, in October, what meeting they could attend. I would not want to put a deadline date on the supervisor or the clerk.
Could we put a, could we require them to attend a meeting just on a date to be decided later, in coordination with those departments? I guess legally, can, can we require that from an elected official?
I don't believe you can require somebody to attend a meeting. You can request them, because we're talking about their budget items. It would be in their best interest to participate, but requiring them, no.
The Parks Board.
You could request them also. Otherwise, it might affect what their request is.
And I would, I would assume that we're, you would plan on doing those separately, correct? You wouldn't have the supervisors that, I think you'd want the park as their own thing, correct?
I don't mind if we do it on separate nights. The clerk and the supervisor don't have much on the list relative to the Parks Commission.
Park probably warrants like multiple meetings, or maybe a meeting in the round where we all meet together and discuss some of these items. But certainly, I would say, don't want to do it in a vacuum, where you have a night you talk with the Park Commission, a night you talk with the clerk, and a night you talk with the supervisor, and there's no back and forth about, there's some give and take here, right? Like, if, you know, the supervisor wants to concede, okay, maybe this is not desirable, we could, we could emphasize the clerk department's request to escalate something. You can't have that give and take if everybody's kind of in their own vacuum on different meetings.
I think the hard part becomes this first go-addict, because everything's new to the list. I think in future years, it would be just an update, and anything new or anything need to go, and anything that has to change priority. But I do agree that we should probably have more of a collective meeting with all the groups and not operate separately. I don't know, is that a public hearing? Is that what that becomes, or how does that really get handled?
It is not a public hearing. I just have to make sure I do not have more than three elected officials. So you would not be able to have more than just the clerk or the supervisor, because I have Mr. Montre, who is already a trustee on the board. So we have to keep in mind when we're going to ask someone to attend, talking about budget items and items that the board will make a decision on. So I would, I would suggest to do the Park Commission and get that reined in first, because they are the most items on this capital improvement plan. See where you're at working with the Park Commission first.
We can only.
And I know that Mr. Niederhold is willing to come to the meetings. That's why he's here tonight, because he did request that if we put the CIP on, he would like to be attendance to at least have input of what the discussion is.
So can we only have two Park Board members then, since they're elected officials, and Mr. Montre is the third? Or does it become a special, do we need to schedule a special meeting, I guess, like we did for the master plan? To be able to have everybody here at that point?
To be honest, the more you have, the more discussion you're going to have. I would, the Park Commission meets monthly as well. I would think if you had two Park Commission members representative, they would be able to protect the information back to a Park Commission meeting, and then come back to the next meeting. I'm not sure if it's going to be a decision on your end. Keep in mind, public hearing, notice, mailings, anything that requires from the township and the state requirements on the cost of the township.
Are you guys okay with the, would it's at the second Wednesday of September would be our normal meeting time? Let's at least set that for the Parks Board. I, I think it gives them enough time to change and edit their budgets before the budget, township budget gets discussed.
Township budget just was approved in June, but Mr. Miller likes to have the information in January. So the second meeting for the planning commission in September would either be September 10th or September 24th, second and fourth Wednesdays.
I propose September 10th. Are you guys all right with that?
For what? For what?
For a meeting with the Parks Board, to have them come in and present their CIP.
I think your request has already been accepted.
I will send out an email to the Park Commission requesting that, admittedly, two representatives show up and schedule for the September 10th, and I'm sure.
They're good guys. I know they're going to want to work on this and make it a winner, so.
Do you have something you wanted to add?
And then the supervisor and the clerk, if they want to come at their convenience by the end of the year. You know, send out an invitation then toward the end of the year. So, all right. What else? Anything else on this subject? Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Discussion on outdoor speakers. Ms. Rector, do you want to give a summary, or no?
Mr. Dersh asked for it to be on the agenda. I'll leave it on to you to discuss.
Talk about anything in particular?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to bring this back up, because I felt that it kind of died in discussion previously. And there was previous requests from the Board of Trustees to look at this and come up with something and present something. So I think the onus is on us to at least present, make a recommendation, and let them decide how they want to move forward. So I know we had a couple of questions on things. I have a couple of initial comments. I don't know what the other members' thoughts are on this, but, you know, definitely open, I think, to working through these last couple of nuances and putting something we can get as a recommendation. I think, is that the next, we still have to have a public hearing, or the next step, the recommendation at this point?
Have to get the language. I already presented this to the Township Board, and it was desired to move back to the planning commission and keep working on it. So if we present it, I believe however you want to amend it, we should get it into that format, amend it, schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Unless you're, unless your recommendation is going to pre, to present it back to the Township Board, to see if their desire is to keep moving forward.
Was there any particular specific they wanted us to look at?
To allow outdoor speakers.
Instruction whether to get this as specific as possible.
The discussion was, if, I think I had the minutes in here from the Township Board.
That was the original.
And it was to, um, move forward with Leonard Graham and Goldsmith to work on conjunction with the planning department and draft new language for the board to take a look at. And it was for outdoor music only. And we came back with the language, and then in 2023, we presented this to the Township Board, and it was to move forward with legal, to allow soft background music on business patios. And that was in 2023. And then we've brought it back to you twice, and no direction on a public hearing.
Okay, so they haven't seen this language. Okay, I was confused there for a second. I think maybe some others were, too, so. I guess I can start with a couple of things. I know one thing that we talked about, and I thought we were kind of agreement on, is the Sunday nights, maybe looking at moving that to 8:00 PM, since that is kind of a work night, not more of a play night for most people. And still maintaining the 10:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. So I think we were kind of in alignment with that.
And I think we amended that Friday through Sunday until 10:00 PM on number 12, hours of operation, 1st of May to the 31st of September, and I think that was changed, and only Monday through Thursday till 8:00, and Friday and through Sunday till 10:00. I believe that was the discussion, and we, on number 12 that I have up on the screen, I believe that that was amended. And we had for Friday, Memorial Day, till Monday of Labor Day, and discussion was to allow it through the month of May and September only.
Okay, I guess I thought we were looking at Sunday night to 8:00 PM.
That's what I thought. It was just Friday and Saturday till 10:00. Anybody remember different? I think it should be.
You can change anything you want. I'm just, you let us know what you want changed, and we'll amend it.
I would agree to that change. I'm fine with that.
Okay, so make it Friday and Saturday till 10:00, and Sunday through Thursday until 8:00.
And I think another point we were kind of hung up on was the site plan and locations of speakers, and the information that we were requesting or wanted to request. I think, Mr. Mahoney, maybe that was some of your thought of, do we want to require that they show the speakers and/or give some sort of direction that they point inward to the building or inward away from the property line? I know there was some thoughts on how to.
I thought that could be handled in the site plan. Is that right, Ms. Rector? Direction of the speakers? In that phase of the application process?
I don't think we, we actually put it as a requirement, but I know.
I think it was discussion on how high you wanted the speakers.
Right. All right, do we want to put a regulation on the height of a speaker?
I'm not interested in the height as much as I am location and direction. I don't know if it's prudent to say that they should point inward to the patio space that's occupied and not out, away from the property.
I'll agree with that.
That that's reasonable in that respect, but yeah, a specific height I don't know is reasonable.
I will, I'll drop my request. It was just a thought.
So how, I guess, would that be achieved, like practically speaking? You'd have to have, would, you couldn't have speakers like affixed to the actual structure, because they'd have to probably point outward. It'd have to be like, you'd have to wire them, and they'd have to fit, they'd have to be outside the dining area and facing towards the building. They'd be temporary speakers most likely, or at least movable? I don't know. I'm just thinking, is that a practical difficulty? Like, do we want to constrain, do we want to make that a requirement?
Okay, I just didn't say it was a perfect request. I definitely think seeing the locations in the site plan would be helpful. But yeah, I'm open to ideas on any other thoughts on that, because I know that was something we talked about, and that's kind of where we left it in, in discussion.
Keep in mind, once you make it defined in the language, they'll, that is what will be required through the site plan. If you allow it to be shown on the site plan, as the speakers must be shown, height of speakers directed inward, then that can be discussed through the planning commission on the special approval. But once you put a determination on it, that is what will be required on all cases.
All right, so regarding speaker placement, we, do we agree that they should be faced inward and not outward toward a parking lot or open field or residential area?
Not necessarily.
Do you think?
I, I, I think, I'm with Mr. Andrews. I just think that it's like, not necessarily needs to be a requirement. I mean, like, literally the, what is the, where was the verbiage? Where it said like, soft music on a patio, like, soft music on a patio shouldn't have to be, like, where the speakers are pointing, shouldn't, like I said, if, it, it makes it so they cannot be affixed to the building. And requires, like, and I'm, like I said, you're trying to think of anywhere and everywhere where they're going to have to go put speakers to be able to do this. It just seems like, I don't know. I don't know if you'd say to call it a practical difficulty. I don't know if we want to call it that, but I don't know that I'm necessarily in favor of saying that that's, that that should be a requirement.
So you don't think there should be any restriction on speaker placement, quantity? Anything?
Not necessarily.
Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I will just include, keep in mind, it's required to be a special approval, so we'll have a plot plan. When they, each application comes in, the number of outdoor speakers is number seven, and you can say that location of the speakers, they can provide all that on a site plan.
I like that. I think we at least need to say number of speakers and location to include height and placement, something, some sort of verbiage like that. Then at least if there's a concern during the site plan process, we can at least discuss it, since we have the information in front of us to look at.
Did you guys have, Mr. Allen?
I was just going to talk about, I mean, the speakers, most of it's just background music. Am I thinking, like, it's not a big rock band with all these, it's just, what, you know, so four speakers pointing is not going to interrupt anybody. Or is it, we need to put on, or you can't have them pointing out? I, I don't think that's, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, I agree.
A band is going to be facing in or some, you know, but isn't that a different special?
Yeah, we're not talking about.
This is just speakers and, you know.
It's kind of one of those things, like, if we're going to dictate the number of speakers or the directionality of speakers, like, we kind of have to define a basis, whereas if it's just a special approval, it's shown on the site plan, we get to review it. It's kind of like, I can't tell you how high a speaker needs to be, but if I see that the speaker's 25 feet in the air, I could tell you that's too high. You know what I mean? So we get to review that, and we get to see that through the, the special approval process. I don't know that we necessarily need to.
What would be perfect height or the highest?
That's what I'm saying. I don't know. I have no idea.
10 feet be all right?
That's why it's a, that's why it's a goofy thing to try to regulate. And same thing as like, I, I think, number of speakers. I think there's an assumption that if there's a lot of speakers, that that means it's louder. I would make the argument, the more speakers you have, the more control you are in being able to play the music softly, and everyone, everyone in the area can still hear it. So if you say, well, you're only allowed to have one speaker, that one speaker has to be louder than it would to, for that sound to carry than if you had multiple speakers all at a very low volume for your, whatever your vicinity is, for all those people to be able to hear it, and not the people outside. So it's like, that's what I said, it's, which, that's the thing. That's why this has taken forever, right? It's impossible to police, and.
It isn't, right, because I think what we.
Challenging, I'll say.
Yeah, yeah, because we do have, you have to get a, a one-time special approver, and it's, and it's annual. So I think if, if this comes before us and you hear that there was unpleasantness with the whole situation, you're reluctant to grant another approval. So I do think there is a somewhat of a policing involved, right? It's a great no, but it's better than nothing. And, you know, I think to get too tied up in, in how they're going to set up the outdoor area, I think just defining the times really helps support, and we can protect local surrounding environments. But, you know, some of the other things might be a bit burdensome. There's a lot in there, so they're going to really want it. You know, they're going to, they're going to go through all the trouble of what we have in here. They're going to want to make sure they don't have to go through levels of scrutiny again. So I think by what we have just here, and the times that protect the public, and then having them come back each year to get this done again, I think it's pretty sufficient with where we're at, if you guys can align to that.
I think it's good. I think seeing the location, since we're asking for everything else, shouldn't be that much of an additional burden to put on a site plan. It's not like we're asking for a, a building erection plan that's going to take them days and thousands to put together. It's probably going to be pretty simplistic, yeah, napkin sketch of, this is what we got, and this is what we plan to do.
I hate to put you on the spot. Can you repeat that verbiage that you proposed or talked about a few minutes ago? If you wanted to read?
The number of speakers. The number of speakers to include locations and height. Something simple that at least we know, Mr. Andrews said, if it's 20 feet in the air, at least we can ask the question and say, why? Why do you think you need a speaker here? What, you know, what was the thought behind that? So we can understand it.
So Mr. Campus, just to be clear, if somebody proposed in their site plan six speakers and it's a really small patio and the planning commission, they can say, no, you only need four. Is that how it would work?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's for review and special approval with conditions.
Okay. I like that.
Who approves? You?
Planning commission.
We approve, so each individual comes out and then we're approving.
They would provide a plot plan, showing all one through 11, I think, are the actual requirements of the ordinance. 12 is permitted by their hours. And 13 is determining whether the provisions, the ordinance are being observed. All of those would have to be shown on the plot plan and any conditions, changes, requirements the planning commission may have that can all be included in the special approval recommendation, determination.
Just one more, and this would be a public hearing as well, right?
The special approval initial would be a public hearing. And then the renewal would just come back for renewal, should there be no determination of complaints, violations, not in compliance with what was approved on the site plan. I said plot plan.
Plot plan.
The renewal will just come to the planning department, right? Not the planning commission?
I don't think there was ever determination made when we discussed it, whether if it should come back before this board or if it should just be an administrative, should there be no concerns?
Can we tackle that one in a minute? Because on the same issue of public hearing, I think we have to specify or go over, like, what's the, how many hundreds of feet radius do we?
That was my next note I had is, we talked about maybe extending this to 500 foot? Because there was a lot of residential properties around most of these businesses that could do this, and maybe that 300 foot didn't cover everybody.
I was thinking at least 500 feet.
Keep in mind, it's speakers and not amplified sound, not coming from amplified music. It is speakers. So that was a discussion. I think there was no final determination, but 500 feet was discussed.
We talked about a lot of stuff, but didn't make any decisions, apparently. I'm okay with the 500. Yeah.
I think if it's not amplified sound, right, it's just to Mr. Montry's point, you know, soft noise or whatever the case may be, then I think you can stick with the standard requirement. I think it's 200 feet. I can't remember.
Keramyn. To use the word not amplified, I don't know if that's correct, because all speakers have to be driven by an amplifier.
I was going to ask what the difference was.
Yeah, I think we're, probably meant like live music type amplifiers, right?
And if like there was an acoustic that would be plugged into an amplifier.
We continue.
Yeah, and then I do think one thing about the renewal, I, Mr. Andrews kind of hit on this a bit. I do think if we can make it a requirement to come back to this board each year, if it's possible to make it a public hearing again, so that the local folks can also voice their opinions, so we can hear that. Therefore, that allows that additional amount of policing that we can do ourselves as opposed to when the ordinance folks aren't around to go police it.
So who do we invite within 300 feet or 500 feet?
I think the standard is 200 feet.
Three.
300. So let's just leave it at three. That's the standard.
Any thoughts, anyone?
I'm not against that. It's fine.
Pardon? You go to two or three, 300 feet?
I think 300 feet, especially if you're going to require them to come back with a special approval every year for the reapproval, I think 300 feet would be the neighbors that would be the most affected. And for the renewal, those would be the ones that would come in with any concerns.
All right, so now what about repercussions and follow-up and remedies for people who think it's a real problem within the 300 feet or whatever range, really?
I think if it comes back for annual renewal and the public is notified and they come back, planning commission has every right to deny the renewal.
Okay, we'll hear it.
I like the idea.
Do we need to make that part of this?
We will need to change the language to have the annual permit and renewal fee will require another public hearing.
So let's add that in. You guys all right with that?
Yeah, I guess I have a question or thought. So in theory, this is applicable to any business in Bedford, so we have enough meetings scheduled to hear this every year. Are we going to require that they be heard at the same meeting? Are we going to require that they be heard in for March?
It's as the applications come in.
Well, I guess, as I understand it now, we have non-compliant businesses that have outdoor speakers, so I think once this language gets implemented, there'll probably be a flurry of applications. Somehow taper that so that our reviews are not all.
It would be on a case-by-case basis. Can't require them to come in. If there's a complaint, then they would be required to know there is a process and they would have to follow the process. But I would say trying to schedule them to all come on the same meeting would be difficult because it's going to be by applicant.
Long meeting. Can we set, like, I guess, when does an ordinance take effect? As soon as the board signs it and votes on it at that meeting?
Eight days after publication. Once the board would come here for a public hearing, you make a recommendation. I request it to be on the next township board meeting. And then once they make a determination, it has to be republished and then eight days after publication, it becomes into effect.
And we recommend an effective date of next year to, if people time to prepare and.
Well, you're only allowing it through September.
Yeah, so if it gets approved in August and, or say.
I'll be honest with you, I'll still have to bring it back to you with amendments. And then it would still have to be required to go for a public hearing.
Okay, so not this year.
I would say that I would not see it going to the township board before the end of September without a public hearing.
How about the process take hold, right?
Yeah, we drug our feet since March, so it's another month or two.
Touche.
We should definitely review this in October.
I have one more thing that we need to go back to, because we only discussed having a $25 annual renewal fee. We also want to discuss, should we have a fee for this for the applicant, because we are doing a publication? Publications run anywhere between $200 and $300 for the publication, plus the cost of all the mailings that would need to go out within 300 feet. So I believe there should be a determination of a fee to provide for this. Only otherwise, it's on the back of the taxpayers for all the publications, should there be several.
That's my apprehension about needing to do, needing to do it every year.
And then the publication for, that's why we said that it would be an annual permit and a renewal fee of the $25. Because if you require the public hearing, you're going to want to include another fee of a public hearing.
Our application fees and renewal fees should encompass any costs in administering this. It should not fall on taxpayers who don't even go to these places.
And you need to determine a cost, because I will have to add it for a special approval for outdoor speakers for the township board to approve for the fee schedule, just like that we just did for fences and accessory buildings. Those will be on the township board on June 17th. And they will also then have to re-approve the fee schedule to include that $100 application fee. So if there is a determination, I would request it to be included, because it will have to be amended on the fee schedule.
I would suggest something along the lines of $250. We let it run for a year and see how it goes and we'll change it if we have to. It should not cost anybody who doesn't attend these places.
And I agree, if somebody feels it's important to their business, they're going to find a way to take care of that, right? So I think they've really got to be.
Maps are included in a notification. $250 will not cover even the publication in the Monroe Union News.
Tell us, Jody, how much?
I would say minimally $500.
$500 bucks. And then we'll review it after a year and see if it was enough.
And the only reason I say that is you think $300 for a publication and then if you have 300-foot mailings, sometimes in a residential district area, you could have several and postage stamps keep going up.
And then I also want to have this commission review after, a year after the end of Memorial Day, after we've had a season under our belt. How did it go? Did we get a lot of complaints? Is that reasonable to keep that on the agenda in October? Or September?
I would say a renewal is going to be when the applicant comes back to renew that.
I'm talking about the whole policy, the whole ordinance. Maybe we should change it again if it didn't work. There were too many complaints.
Keep in mind, that's why we take our time to do these, because every time we make an amendment and change, it has to go through the entire process. Public hearing notice, notification, back to the planning commission, then to the township board, any amendments, and then another publication in the paper. When you do an ordinance amendment, it is two publications minimally in the paper. The last one was $375 for the first publication.
How many sheriffs do we have driving around on Friday and Saturday nights?
I have no idea what sheriffs are on duty on Friday and Saturday nights.
We don't even know if this can be enforced at all. We were rolling the dice. It's like we have to make something permanent.
Well, yeah.
And it could cost us an arm and a lug in the end, and I don't like that.
Well, I think, and that's why I think it's important that it comes back for approval to this board and make it a public hearing. And because it does allow the public to voice their opinions. Otherwise, we'll approve it once and then it's off to the races. Right? That's the only way I see that we're able to kind of police this activity. Otherwise, we're just going to continue to talk about ordinances and enforcing things on weekends, which we know that's the case. The police officers, I mean, they're not going to go to that. There's more important things for them to attend to, right? So I think that that gives us the opportunity. If it's $500, so be it. As long as it gives us the opportunity to have another public hearing. So you talk about, you know, how this entity might have behaved towards their plan over the course of the year. I think it's worth it.
I hope we're very stringent, whoever is on the board at the time, to take it seriously. If it's a big problem.
If I could say so.
Mr. Andrews, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm also in favor of the township's taxpayers not fronting the bill. But every time you bring this in front of this commission, there is some cost. It's hard to predict exactly what that cost is. And I don't think, you get into $500, like business A, maybe let's say they completely adhere to what we would say is a good standard, where they're good neighbors, they don't play too loud. It's, they're generally, like, their speakers aren't a problem. And then business B is subject to the exact same review process, but they're loud, they have all sorts of, there's a public hearing involved. I would be in favor of maybe backing up a little bit on the requirement that we as a board, because the cost associated with this, review every single permit, every single year. I would be in favor of that all renewals of these permits need to go through the planning department. And if in writing someone submits a complaint, or maybe there's a minimum requirement of three complaints by the end of the calendar year, that automatically gets pushed to the planning commission for review. Renewal of that specific property, because, you know, we could be talking about many, many properties. And, you know, maybe 90% of them don't play their music very loud, they're not a problem. To bring them before this board and ask them to pay $500 as a business, maybe they're a small business. I just think it's not, it's not fair to ask for that from your taxpayers, for sure, but it's also, you're getting to a point where maybe it's not fair to ask these businesses, smaller businesses, to come before the commission for renewal every single year when really they're not a problem and they have no issues with their neighbors and the neighbors like them.
Where you look at it, you know, all these, anybody who wants to have music on a patio, they're all have the same level playing field. So if we don't even allow it, they all have the same rules to play by. If they have to pay $500, everybody does. What if one person complains three times? Does that count?
I guess that's for commission discussion.
Or would you look at that person and say, oh, they're just being a nag? I mean, they could be very illegitimate and other people just say, oh, whatever, I'm not going to complain.
I think, I think, yeah, the impetus is on us to establish what that number is, if we were to go somewhere like this route. But I think that route ends up being a lot less costly to the township, to these business owners, to the residents.
The business owners don't have to pay the $500.
Well, they're not currently paying the $500, so they have outdoor speakers.
But if we impose the $500 application fee, they don't have to pay it. We're not forcing them to do it. Up to them.
I guess you're not like a company like Forest View, for example, and I'm not picking on anybody. Likely will have no problem fronting $500, but a small business, like a small bistro, maybe $500 is a little bit more problem. And maybe $500 isn't even the number. Like if we expand from 300 feet to 500 feet or whatever it might be, maybe it's 750, maybe it's $1,000. You get into a territory where it's like, we're not talking about peanuts anymore. And I guess for, if 90% of cases aren't going to be an issue for the adjacent residents, which we don't know at this point.
Well, if the cost of a public hearing is $500, that's what we should charge.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
The question is, should we have a public hearing every single year, to have a public hearing every single year, to review every single one, every single time and charge them $500 to $1,000?
We will use most definitely every single one of our meetings as scheduled, which is fine. But there's also additional cost to the taxpayer when we gather as a commission. So, you know, that's another thing to consider. We're just kind of a lot more meetings. We're going to, we're going to probably review whatever there is, hundreds of businesses, as people start to implement these.
It'll be, plus and it does.
Probably exaggerate it, right?
It'll be about 10, maybe.
But it'd also be, like, I think, I think it's far-fetched to assume, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, that this is going to be a problem at all. I don't foresee it being a problem at all, ever. I don't think we'll ever hear about anyone. It just, and now, who knows, down the road. Bedford has great business owners that understand their community. And they don't want to, like, like I said, whoever is bringing this to, when did this get brought to you, Jody? Six years ago? That somebody, that somebody's standing in line waiting to follow the rules because they don't want, like, we have good business owners that want to play by the rules. They don't want to upset their neighbors. They want to, that's not just, I mean, really, that's just good business, to not have everybody be mad at you. And all of your neighbors be mad at you. I think, I just really think the likelihood that this is going to be an issue is, I think it's far-fetched. I think it'll be, okay, we're going through the approval process, they're not going to want to get it taken away, they're going to want to follow the rules. No. It, I think if it ever becomes a problem, it'll be something goofy and accidental. Where somehow, some way, somebody left the speakers on or something after they closed and they, and, oh, it was up all night and it's like, an unintentional thing that somebody accidentally left the speakers on after the restaurant closed or whatever it may be. So I would agree. I think the, because of the costs associated, I think trying to do the full, I know, I wish there was a way to review, like you said, okay, after you do your run, if there is a way to kind of open that, is there any feedback from the public? Is there any feedback where is anybody having an issue? Because of course, if there is an issue, we want to be, you don't want to just go, too bad, get over it. Like, that's obviously not anyone on this board's position either. But, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Andrews. I think it's, seems a little excessive to require annually, especially when you're charging that amount.
But we're not making money. This is just to cover the cost.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, that's, I mean, you could say that about a lot of things. It's still, it's still a burden on someone to, and increasing the cost of doing business for business owners.
Mr. Andrews?
How hard would it be to have language that says, "Subject to new complaints or substantiated violations, the planning commission reserves the right to waive your public hearing and renewal fee" or something? That way it's not putting it on planning to say, well, is this legit or not? If you've got complaints, public hearing. If you don't, then we waive it and you move on and at least takes the burden off of.
Because the business owner deserves the right to be heard in a public forum. I mean.
Well, if they have no complaints, they have nothing to talk about. And that's, I'm trying to make a happy medium here.
I think it was discussed at the last meeting, though, who's going to determine a validation of a complaint.
If it's anything, they have to come back for a public hearing, but if you have no complaints, then you're free and clear. At least there's a line that we can definitively agree on at that point and it's not arbitrary.
And I think we should err on the side of caution and for very subjective ordinance that we're talking about here. Objective for sound, how long it carries, complaints, you know, there's a lot to adjudicate, I think.
And I just want to be the somewhat bearer of bad news. Keep in mind that sound is not only determined in our ordinance by the speakers, it's going to be hooting and hollering. When you start having outdoor speakers, remember that includes extra people.
I don't get out much anymore, Ms. Rector. So I don't know what you're talking about.
That's too sad for you. I'm just, our ordinance does refer to that as sound traveling too. So you have to keep that in mind, that when I say that, that's why I'm worried about enforcement and what is considered an actual violation. Because I am loud when I speak and so you could have no speakers on and you probably could hear me three streets over.
The complaint, Ms. Rector was too loud.
That's sidelined.
Oh, I could hear her voice for three days.
Yeah, no, again, I'm just spitballing how to kind of appease everybody. If you don't have any complaints, you shouldn't have to pay the fee and come in for a public hearing. I mean, that's, I mean, or do you...
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mahoney.
Fine. How is that currently classified slash policed within ordinance or within MCL? Is hooting and hollering? If, if Mr. Mahoney and his pals are getting rowdy over at Quimby's and there's no amplified ore speakers being played and they're a hooting and a hollering and the entire neighborhood behind them, it, that's, it's not the business, it is just the people, the people at that business. How is that covered currently?
It's covered as a public nuisance, right?
Disturbing the peace.
Disturbing the peace.
Well, I think the common question is, how's that getting enforced?
By the police.
That would be a sheriff deputy would...
If it's a, if it's a problem, someone is going to call the cops and a deputy is going to roll over there and tell Mr. Mahoney to keep it down.
Doesn't get out that much.
I'm going to Quimby's after this. Who wants to go?
We can go after this if you want.
Hooting and holler. That's the logic.
So the, this ordinance would be subject to the same, the sound ordinance, which is that a deputy would have to respond to a complaint if the speakers are too loud?
Which would, as currently, would be up to, the deputy could go out there and say, "This is completely acceptable, hooting and hollering," or "This is unacceptable and it is not objective."
Can I ask a wild question? Is this a problem? What, right now?
Yeah.
Well, I think right now they can't play music outdoors, correct?
Are you asking about the playing of music currently?
Right, yeah. I don't think that they can, but they do.
It's not a problem at all. They do currently, but people who don't want to break the rules are not, they don't want to do it because I know I'm not allowed, so I don't want to do something up. Can you please make something in writing that says I'm allowed to do it, so I'm not breaking the rules? I don't want to get in trouble. I'm doing something I'm not supposed to, correct? So that's the ask.
I don't think it's going to be a big deal.
I don't think so either.
So essentially, we're making a solution looking for a problem.
Yes.
But if there are public hearings required, we ought to cover the cost, right? Do we have any public hearings? Or should we just leave things be and let people do what they want until there's complaints? And what do we have to...
Keep in mind the ordinance is permissive and it's up to the planning commission. Having said that, the discussion at the township board level, I believe Mr. Goldsmith refers to, feels the ordinance should require an amended site plan, taking into consideration the physical character of their outdoor dining area and its proximity to residential uses and implement certain buffering. He also states on competing land uses and how the board needs to be sensitive to both business owners and residential homeowners. And then the board members at the time stated they were concerned with enforcement and would like the ordinance to be very detailed.
We couldn't put in decibels, a requirement like other townships.
Already in the sound?
Basically.
Enforcement of that is difficult.
So we're agreed on 300-foot radius for public hearings. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Are we agreed that we're going to change that? It's going to be Sunday through Thursday until 8:00 p.m., Friday, Saturday until 10:00?
Yes.
Got that ironed out?
Yes.
And then we're going to add into a recommendation, the height, number, size of speakers used on the site plan or listed on the site plan, it's subject to special conditions set forth by the planning commission?
Yes.
People like that?
I'm aligned.
Yep.
And then we were talking about the fees. And if there are, if we have to have public hearings, the cost should be borne by the applicant. Because just, we have to have an ordinance. If we're going to have one, it's going to cost money and it shouldn't cost anybody but the people who want it, want the variance of the...
I think we're in agreeance on that. I think it's just whether you have them annually, whether you have, I think, I think the board seems to like, agree that, yes, we want that to be covered. It can be covered in the application. It's just, are you going to force that person to have to...
As long as it's a public hearing, yeah, I think we do.
Come back every year, though.
If there has to be a public hearing every year, then...
There doesn't have to be a public hearing every year.
All right, then we don't have to do it then.
So it can go...
Just the initial application.
The renewal can go through the planning department.
The planning department should make that, in my opinion. Determination if it comes to us.
For renewal, I agree.
So renewal not requiring a public hearing, should it cost 25 dollars at that point?
For the renewal?
The first one's going to cost. I mean, we have to have it.
It's 25 on the permit, which is what we charge for like fences and stuff. I think that just covers like... I think it's 25 on the, on the application.
Can I have Katrina pull up the fee schedule? Right now, I believe all of our fees are roughly 500 dollars. Keep in mind, if we have other items on the agenda, then that covers the commission's...
But for a, for a renewal that just goes through you, what would that be? Same thing?
That's what we, that's what we were talking about, the 25 dollars, when it was an annual renewal fee.
That would just be a 25 dollar.
But I believe there should be something notated, though, that commission should take into consideration if there's any changes. If they enlarge the patio area, if they change how many or the number of speakers, I believe that should be held and back to the commission. That's why I wasn't opposed to redoing. If there's any changes, it should be notated that it needs to be, I don't feel as a planning department, I should be able to make those administrative reviews of a change of a site plan.
I agree. And so maybe we put in there any changes requires a public hearing and another 500 bucks.
Well, I think the change could come before the planning commission for review, but not require a public hearing.
Has to, I think.
There's an opportunity for the public certainly to come talk during public comment. But the change doesn't necessarily add, like, they move one speaker from this corner of their dining area to this area. Do we need to charge 500 dollars for a public hearing? Or do we just have them come before us again for a follow-up? Hey, here's an updated site plan, subject to your review.
Keep in mind, there still should be a fee because it's minimally 305 dollars every time the commission meets.
So whatever that cost is, 305 dollars. We're not getting raises? No, I'm just kidding. Sorry.
Mr. Andrews. So 500 dollars every time there is a public hearing acquired. Is that simple enough? Word it like that? In our recommendation? Anyone from my right, Mr. Camper?
I'm just saying, if you're making anything to have to come back, it's going to have to be defined of what the cost is going to be, unless you require a fee and an escrow.
That's what it says now on the permit. It says 450 fee and 500 escrow for 950, then a 25 dollar renewal. That's what's on the form now.
And I don't know if there's an option. I mean, this is till Memorial Day. They can wait until we're already meeting and you've already got other things on the agenda, correct? So it isn't like we're going to set up a special meeting, you know?
That would be a determination by the applicant. I would not require that because should we then not have another meeting and it pushes it back? And then they don't get approval or renewal before the end of the season? And then the season begins? Then they would be in violation of the approval. So I would not, it'd be case by case based, I guess.
We'd have six months for them to decide if they want to renew their application, is my point. They can fit that into any meeting that we would normally have anyway. I don't think we should, you know, gather just for that. That wouldn't make sense. What else do we have to iron out?
I guess a question, maybe I'm not clear on, is if there's changes to the site plan, is a special, is this public hearing required? Or is that something we can truly evaluate and say, okay, this is a minimal change, go ahead and renew?
In my opinion, we're being too subjective of what should be determined from my department on what should come back. So if we're going to set the standards, they should either be, they all have to come back for a public hearing, or once they get a renewal, only because I think we're being, where I'm going to make the decision whether it's a valid enforcement or three or cost-wise. I think it should be across the board, whatever, no matter if it's an outdoor patio for outdoor speakers, it should be across the board for each use. That's my opinion.
I guess the assumption being if we're going to submit for renewal, you have submitted a site plan the previous year. It's been reviewed. There's been a public hearing. We've given initial approval. If that site plan remains completely the same, no changes to the configuration, height, size, number of speakers, that to me is something that the planning department could...
And I'm not opposed to that if there are no changes to the site plan. My concern is when we get to discussing of how many complaints and enforcements there are. If there is a specific change, moving a speaker from one side of the patio to the other is not a significant change of a patio change. But if someone wants to come in and add 10 feet to their patio, that isn't a significant change. You're adding maybe another picnic table. But I don't think that should be my interpretation. That's you approving it as a special approval if they make any changes. So it has to be across the board. I don't think a fee of this for one, a fee of that. It should be set standards and so it's not misinterpreted and we have set standards of what is required. I don't have an issue if there's no changes. We do the same thing for the farmer's market, just came back to the BZA. There were no changes to that review. But when we start talking about uses, this is a use that's being allowed on a patio outdoors. So I think that you have to be very specific of how you want the language to be if you are going to make specific changes for whatever's being presented. To say that if there's no concerns or no complaints or no enforcement issues, they don't have to come back. I don't know if ordinance enforcement even wants to take on that for to say, well, the sheriffs went out there and determined there was no noise. But if a resident calls the enforcement office, is that considered a complaint? I would say yes.
And is sheriff even going to tell us if they've made a call?
As Mr. Camper always says, subjective of who's calling and stating the complaint.
Mr. Lake?
I don't know if I had any comments, but yeah, I tend to agree. Like, if we did make a subject to review based on complaints, complaints to who, complaints to what, I think it's valid argument. I think it's a great way to try to adjudicate it, or at least bring it back to review. But it is very, it will be challenging to figure that out. Especially if you've got like one squeaky wheel that lives really close by and just does, just has it out for the, for the owner of the property. You know, it can happen, right? And if they find out that, hey, if I call enough times, it's going to be up for review. I could really stick it to this guy.
Sure.
Now, I'm not saying that people would do that, but it could happen, right? It's a hypothetical. I was the one that made the recommendation about having them come back every year so we could police it. I'm going to go against that now. I've been, I think I've been thoroughly beaten down on that one. I do, I do think Jody is right as well. It would be tough if we have it come back and they want to make changes. I don't feel that that should be left to the planning department. I think it should be up for review again and subject to a fee to do that, right? If it's going to come back up, it should have a public hearing. Now, how big of a change, that's the question. I just say any change. They got to really want to do, like, if they're just going to move one speaker to another spot, just don't do it, right? I mean, otherwise, you got to come back to us and go through this whole process all over again. So is it worth it? They're going to have to ask themselves. And I'm sure Jody will be happy to explain, if you want to move that one speaker in your plan, you're going to have to come back up in front of us. So I would recommend maybe you don't do that unless you really want to make this change.
You know, once they get started with it, they're going to tweak things if it didn't work out the way they drew it out on paper.
They'll have to come back to us to have that done.
Yeah, man.
Because didn't we discuss that that 25 dollars covers the building official inspection every year? Would they go out there every year and look at it? I thought we talked about that at one point, that that was part of what that fee covered.
I don't remember.
Okay.
I'd be thinking of fences and everything else, too.
Is that, is that in here at all, a building inspector or ordinance officer inspection or anything like that? I didn't think so.
The patios are normally inspected because they have to submit for a building permit for a patio. It would be through the site plan approval. We can add that. I believe that that was the intent, though, was for the building official to go out to make sure that once the site plan was approved. Because if they're adding anything, running electrical for the speakers, anything of that nature would require a permit.
Well, there's your site plan policing every year.
Site plan police.
I like that addition. Maybe I was thinking, again, of fences. I know we talked about that a couple different ways of having that happen. It's just kind of a check and balance.
Katrina, by chance, did you get all those four points that we did agree on?
Thanks for reiterating them.
We didn't have to talk about it again.
I will say that...
The only four?
We, how about we tweak what was discussed? And as of now, the next meeting is the 25th. We don't have anything on that agenda. But we will be bringing back some information on the master plan. But how about we tweak the information that was changed tonight? Maybe add some language regarding a building official fee for, even if we require the public hearing, a separate building permit fee to ensure that the site plan is in compliance with what is approved? And then doing the annual fee, subject to a review from the building official going out and verifying the site.
I'm good with that.
And then maybe not looking, we'll tweak some of the language and we'll bring it back at the next meeting that we have, instead of just having one for this discussion.
Sounds good. All right, should we make a motion to table?
Nope, we don't need no motions because I just put it on for discussion to get some more input to amend the language.
All right, moving on to item nine, public comment. Casey, no.
We got to get to Quimby's. We got to hurry up.
Okay, intemperance. Okay, well, I was going to mention a couple things about the speakers because, yeah, a renewal, the initial should have a public hearing. The renewal should not. But it would work great if they came in for the renewal and the inspector had to go out and make sure things were kosher upon what they had put in. Cops do respond to noise. I've been aware of several different incidents over my time. Originally, it was sidelines, went out and decided to have outdoor activity and upset the entire neighborhood behind them. That's what started all this. Cops will respond. They're supposed to know the ordinances. But they do say, well, I can't hear it where I was standing. And the other thing was is they have a permit, so it's okay. Now, going back to the other part. The roundabout, everybody was there from the township. But because they weren't making any decisions, they were allowed to be there at one time. This is back to your CIP talk. The park board is duly elected. And some of the issues that they had came with interference from other people within this township. They have their own five-year plan, so hopefully all of you will have read that. And pickleball was slid in under the table so that it avoided being put into the CIP to avoid any kind of control. Millages, I'm not certain where you guys are at. This is, this is confusing to me because I see planning as being the people that are going to be the finger pointers. I don't like what you did, so it's on your back and not theirs. I would like to know where the state statue is, where that's available, so that those of us that want to look that up can look that up. And planning is responsible for setting the right amount of money to be set aside. It was at one meeting where somebody said that the right amount had not been set aside and that was through the financial office. So I'm not real sure here where, how all this goes into play and how it will come into play when we talk about millages and so forth and so on. Suggest maybe an advisory board for the parks. I mean, I don't know what you guys' role is, but they're duly elected. And I, I don't know, we have one township official who sits on several different boards. So to me, I see some of that as a conflict, not necessarily... see some of that as a conflict, not necessarily a help. But it definitely is something that needs to be understood, which I'm trying to learn right along with you guys, so when I get up here, I sound somewhat intelligent. So, I appreciate your efforts in all this, it was a good meeting tonight, thanks.
Thank you.
Josh Intercor, 7948 Wiser Road, Amerville. Good meeting tonight. Feel free to reach out, email me, jintercor@bedfordmi.org. Don't have a problem meeting with any of you guys, I'm here anytime you guys have a meeting, if we're talking about the parks and stuff. I'm sitting back there looking through the master plan, there's quite a bit going on in the parks. If you haven't read through our master plan, you can probably skip down to page 41, and you can see, going park by park, of what's on there. Mr. Montreux, I agree with you, as far as, like, this is why we have a CIP, so we don't have to do millages, and hurt taxpayers more, as far as their money goes, I'm not in favor of a millage. If we can keep doing good with the CIP, if we can get grants, less taxpayer money involved, that's great. Anytime you need anything, just let me know, I'll be willing to meet you guys in September, thanks.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else? Hey, going on to item 10, information. Anything to report?
Yes. Next meeting is June 25th. At this time, I have no items moving forward, however, Tuesday would be the deadline, June 17th. I also wanted to advise, there has been 652 survey responses for the master plan. 652. And to keep in mind, the deadline is this Friday, June 13th at 5:00 p.m., if anyone else would like to take the survey. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you for a good discussion tonight.
Awesome. All right, item 11, commission staff comment, Mr. Montreux?
Nothing for me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dersch?
No, you're good. I won't say what I want to look into, but what is the process to have an ordinance reviewed for possible changes? Is that something we can just bring up to you? And I think it needs more input from maybe Lucy and Manik and Smith about some, what other entities are doing with, at ordinance, before we really look at it.
Which one?
I don't know that I wanna say. I don't, I don't wanna start more fires.
I mean, the ordinance requirements are, if you wanna change an ordinance for a specific reason, you bring it to me, and then I, you have to go to the township board, and they have to give direction to make a determination whether it should be reviewed and looked at to be amended or not.
Okay, so we'd have to propose it to planning, and the planning would bring it to...
Nope, you would propose it to me and the planning department, and then it goes to the township board before any monies are spent on trying to amend an ordinance. If the township board determined to not move forward and make any amendments, felt at this time there were other things that we'd already been looking at, they would make a determination that, no, we would not move forward with amending the ordinance at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Lake? Good. Just a reminder, the Veterans Center 5K is this Friday, you can pull up at 5:30 and register. It's $30 to run, 20 to walk, 5K. And then, we have the golf outing coming up August 2nd. Please participate, call the center if you wanna sponsor. I wanna thank Jacob Tremblay, he sponsored a hole, and then some money for the 5K, and again, Mr. Helm. That's all I have. Mr. Andrews?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Helm?
Great discussion, I, thank you.
Ms. Ingram?
Nothing.
Camper?
Nothing.
And Jody?
I have nothing for it.
Okay, with that, I'll go adjourn the meeting, it is halfway 8:50.